Good evening, everybody. Welcome. It's great to see you all here this evening. We're very happy to have you all here. Welcome to the February 15th Rockville Center Board of Education Public Work Session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. It's great to see you all here this evening. Mr. Gavin, I will turn it over to you for recognition of students.
Yeah, we have a larger turnout than we typically do. And I want to thank everyone for taking this Thursday evening to come out and recognize all of our hackathoners. Our teachers are here, our principals are here, and all of our students are here to celebrate trying something new and probably having a good time and learning a few things at the same time, right, guys? You had a good time? Was it fun?
Yeah.
Would you do it again?
Yes.
All right, that's all I need to know. So I think that's the people I want to thank today. We definitely want to thank our principals for trying something new. We definitely want to thank all of our teachers. Our teachers didn't know how to do a hackathon any more than the kids did when we first started this. So thank you to all of our teachers for taking a risk. Thank you to our students for making an absolutely wonderful event. I went. It was great. I was there from start to finish. The kids did a great job. They had a wonderful time. And I will turn it over to our host with the most, Mr. Duffy, to introduce the hackathon.
Is this on? Yeah. So thank you all for being here. I'm just so happy to see this room packed with our little all-stars. So that's fantastic. And I have to give a big shout-out to the stellar team. The stellar teachers at every building really embraced the hackathon and KidOyo, put a lot of hard work into this, and was able to come up with clubs that were able to compete. If you're unsure what a hackathon is, through KidOyo, which is a coding platform, our students in groups of about 10 would do different coding challenges, challenges in different platforms. They had to play a game that's kind of like the game of Risk. They met with their stellar teachers throughout the year, at the beginning of the year. They came up with strategies. They figured out how to make certain coding things that, to be honest, probably no adult in this room would be able to do, but the kids certainly were able to. And the most important thing that we did is we had fun. And I was very happy to have our building at Wilson host this and have all five teams compete. They all did a great job. And I could tell by the excitement of the kids how much fun that they had. So thank you to the kids who participated. Thank you to the stellar team. And what I think I'd like to do is call up each school individually for a picture and to be recognized. And if the stellar teacher and principal could come up too, that would be great. And we could do it maybe alphabetically. So let's start with Covert. Mr. Figaro, can you bring your team up? Each team has their own colors and their own team names. It's the Covert Encodables. The encodables.
The masks making it.
They're hackers.
Next up, led by Mr. Shafalo and Ms. Jordy, the Hewitt Hawk Hacks. Hackers.
Oh, the screen? Yeah, the screen. We're going to see you. Okay, one last one. Great. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Eckert and the Riverside Raptors. Come on up.
Perfect. Thanks, guys.
This is Martha Morano and the Watson Coding Cats.
I love the hats. Look at you guys. Perfect. Thank you, guys.
And last but not least, Ms. Lauren, Ms. Jordy, and the Wilson Wizards. So this year, the teams consisted of 4th and 5th grade students. We competed in an inter-district play this year, but there are other districts that compete with each other, and we're hoping next year to bring a team to compete with other school districts from around the county. So that'll be a lot of fun. And we thought this was a great first step. So thank you to everyone for taking a chance and participating. And thank you for the teachers and principals for supporting the program. Thank you.
So just to follow up on what Mr. Duffy was talking about, not only did students have to understand coding and some of the challenges that we had in different coding languages, right? You guys had to learn different languages, right? They also had to learn game theory and how to play the game. So I will tell you, we saw lots of teamwork during this piece. We saw lots of, I have a really good solution. Should I put that solution in right now or should I wait till the end so that nobody can take it over? So we saw lots of strategy and game strategy. And I will tell you, the kids were, to use the technical term, wired in. They were right there the whole time. I think anyone that was in that room could see the level of concentration that was taking place for that hour and a half, two hours. We already told the middle school, you guys are coming. So they need to be ready for that next year. So look for us to expand this up in the middle school into the high school level so that we can have a consistent kind of K-12 continuum. That's what we talked about with the board goals last year and through the support of the board. We've been talking about how do we make sure that we have consistent experiences all the way through. So thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We really appreciate you coming out on this. Well, it is a little bit snowing right now. No-sto-day. If you had worn your hats backwards, maybe, but I don't know. But we want to thank everyone for coming out. We want to thank everyone for their support. And just because the hackathon is over doesn't mean you have to stop coding in KidOyo. So that platform allows you to go as far as you want to take yourself. You can go from languages like Scratch and Hatch, which are visual-based languages, all the way to Python, which is what people code in the real world. So definitely take a piece, take that all the way through, and you don't have to wait for us. Chances are, you probably learned more than we do anyway. So definitely have some fun over the break. Enjoy it, and thank you, everyone, for coming out. Greatly appreciate it.
Anyone who wants to go home and get started on their.
You can stay from Mr. Bartel's budget proposal, so if you're in 4th grade, you might really be interested.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
Sorry, Robert, I tried.
Have a great night, everybody. Great job.
That was the best budget ever.
Why would you put the TV under the calendar section and not put it?
It's great. We should have liked the elementary school.
I don't know. Under professional empowerment?
Yeah, I don't know. Why do you think they did?
I don't know, but I can't, I have to talk work through that, so I'm going to get in trouble for working during the board meeting.
Nice job, Jay.
I'm telling you, it's a morning party.
This was like the Super Bowl.
There's a lot more fun than the Super Bowl. And I'm going to get home in bed about the same time, so.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Thank you.
We'll have that video posted on the website.
Perfect.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Celebrity.
It's better than I thought.
See, somebody cares about your budget.
Okay, Mr. Gavin, we have acceptance of a gift this evening?
Yes, Madam President, we do. We are accepting the gift of musical instruments from one of our former parents that wish to give back to the music department and to support students' growth in music. So we are very excited about that. I'm thankful to them.
Yes, thank you very much. Can I have a motion to accept the gift? So moved. Second? All in favor? Thank you again. Mr. Gavin, superintendent's report?
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations to Paul Adai, Paul Markquart, Owen Cashman, and James Gian Gregorio on their selection as all-state musicians. They recently attended the All-State Music Conference along with our faculty members, Dr. Filing and Mr. Pomponio. Well done, all, and they represented Rockville Center in a great way. Good luck to all of our winter athletes as playoffs have arrived. Our gymnasts competed in county competition last evening. Our swimmers and divers last week. Our wrestlers over the weekend, and playoff basketball games start for the boys tonight. It is in the fourth quarter, and it looks like they're winning right now, but let's not count our chickens before they're hatched. Girls' basketball playoffs begin next week during the break on the 22nd. Congratulations to Sofia Bracco, who was just named the National Merit Scholar finalist. We are super proud of her efforts and accomplishments, and she continues to dazzle us not only in the classroom, but she's a very talented musician and overall talented student. As a follow-up to my communication about the incident two weeks ago at the high school, please note that the district continues to pursue any and all legal and disciplinary processes to ensure that our students and faculty are safe. Please do not doubt that our board and my resolve on this issue are firm, that we are steadfast in our desire to make sure that our students and faculty do indeed have the safest possible climate they can to learn. For those that have asked for some more specific information, I want everyone to know that, please know that FERPA, which is a law about student privacy, precludes me from answering specific questions that would compromise the privacy rights of a student, and I would not do anything, do that, or anything that would compromise the legal or disciplinary processes. We always continue to review our security process, and we will try to maintain a balance between ensuring safety and creating the welcoming environment for children, students, and teachers and our community. That's my report, Madam President.
Thank you. We will start the budget work session. It has two parts, the proposed 2024, 2025 budget, and followed by the capital priority needs presentation. Mr. Gavin?
I would like to introduce, even though the crowd has left, our assistant superintendent, Mr. Bartel, who has prepared for us a very thorough overview of the capital portion of our budget. Mr. Bartel?
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. So I'm going to start this presentation. It's going to go into a little bit more detail than we have in the past. Couple meetings ago, we gave you an introduction to the budget process. This is the first real in-depth look at the budget presentation, and I'm just going to roll right into the capital discussion right at the end of this presentation. Both the presentation and the budget document are available on the district website under the agenda for this board meeting, and then we'll also have it available just as regular spots on the main budget page. So looking at the budget schedule, we really start the intro in October, November, December, when we put the whole budget together, finalize it in January, and we did our first budget presentation January 18th. Today, we're starting to get into the budget, and I'll be going through a little bit more of an overview as well. The tax cap calculation is due on March 1st. We do have all the different components to that, so I'll be talking about that tonight, but that is finalized for us right now. We'll get into, on March 7th and March 21st, some additional budget discussions with music and the arts and phys ed, as well as curriculum and PPS. On April 16th is the preliminary budget hearing. That's the last time we'll have a chance if we need to make any changes to the budget. On May 7th is a formal budget hearing, which is something that's required by the state, but we're not allowed to make any changes at that point. Culminates on May 21st with the annual election and budget vote. So tonight, we're going to go over a budget summary, talk about the financial health and budget history in the district, talk about some of the challenges that we're facing in this budget cycle. We'll look at the revenue picture, as well as the budget highlights, and then we'll get into some specific parts of the budget, the administrative benefits and capital portions. So overall, on the budget, right now, we are at a 0.87% increase in the total budget. A big reason for that, it's a little lower. We had an additional amount in last year, $2.5 million for capital projects, the middle school, the turf field, and the roof work. And I'll be talking about that a couple of times in the presentation, but that's one of the reasons that the overall percentage is much smaller this year because that $2.5 million has come out from last year. We're funding that through the tax levy, which right now is at 2.49%. That's what we're proposing going into the budget vote. Our tax cap is actually 2.64%, which is a little higher than it was last time we talked. We got the last final components of that. And what that means is we're about $150,000 under what we could have for the tax levy. So that's the difference of the 2.49 to the 2.64. So that means if we have any other issues, something we need to deal with, or need to add to the budget, we're not expecting that this time, but if we did, there's about $150,000 we could increase the budget by and still be under the tax cap. Our state aid, we project an increase of $1.5 million in our state aid. That number is less than, is right about what the governor's proposal was. The governor's proposal for state aid for Rockville Center for next year actually includes a little bit of a reduction in foundation aid, and so we'd not be under the Save Harmless. Now, that may change with the final proposal from the legislature, but even if it doesn't, that's right about where our number was. We were conservative last year when we budgeted state aid because we weren't sure if everything was going to come through. It did, so our base number for next year, we still have room to increase state aid by about $1.5 million, so that'll help support the budget increase. On other revenue, we had increases in interest in our pilot payments and in project rate, which remains strong. So that helped generate some other additional revenues that we don't have to go to the tax levy for. We continue to use reserves. So we've used reserves, $2.8 million every year to return to the taxpayer. I'll show that on chart coming up, as well as the last several years, we've been using $800,000 in reserves to offset some of the increases. So grand total, we have $137,641,898, which matches our budget number, so we do have a balanced budget, so we're not in any, you know, means that we're looking to cut one thing to get to another or try to find additional money. We are balanced at this point with this budget. This just shows the state aid history, and it shows over the last three years, we've had that increase in the foundation aid. There was a big push over the last three years to get all school districts in New York State fully funded. We had not been receiving our share for a number of years. There was a commitment by the state to do that. They did push that up, so you see our total number for state aid did increase dramatically over the last three years. We do not expect that to continue. We're expecting it to be more flat-lined from here on in. Hopefully, we'll get a little bit increases year to year, but we do not expect any large increase going forward. Some of the other lines, you can see our other aids, which are expense-driven aids other than foundation aid. Total aid is the top line, foundation aid is the middle line, the other ones down at the bottom, you see, don't change too much. Those are expense-driven aids, aids we get back from the state for BOSI's expenditures, transportation expenditures, building aid on capital projects, and so forth. This chart shows our financial health, and basically what it does is it shows the fund balance every year. So the top of the lines are our total fund balance. What makes up that fund balance is the applied fund balance, which is the yellow portion at the bottom. That's the amount we have returned every year to the community to help support the budget. So that's been kind of a staple in our budget process every year. The green is the undesigned portion, so that's our rainy day funds. So you can see that number has shrunk and then has increased, and now it's shrunken again a little bit. That was due to using the extra money. And again, from last year's number, you see a second circle on there. That shows the amount that we took last year, or this year, out of last year's leftover money to fund that $2.5 million in capital projects. So we had expected to see a big reduction, but the drop from last year to what we're projecting at the end of this year is not quite as big as that. So we made up a little more money last year than we had thought, and we should be making up a little bit more money this year. So we were already kind of putting money back into those undesigned reserves. And so hopefully, we can continue to use that going forward. We'll have a higher fund balance total, but we'll be able to use it to help support capital projects and not impact the taxpayer. There's also a smaller circle you see there in the blue section. The blue section are designated reserves. So the little circle is the amount that we've been taking for the last several years and applying to both ERS and TRS payments. That's the portion of retirement system payments that we have to make from both the civil service and the certified staff. Every year, there's employer contributions required, so this has helped us kind of stabilize that line in the budget. I'll be talking about that later. We have to increase the teacher retirement system line a little bit this year, but that has helped us to kind of stabilize that line within the budget. This chart just shows kind of our budget history going back for the last 10, 12 years. You can see kind of the tax levy has kind of followed the budget cycle up until last year, where there was a big variance. Again, that's because we use the reserves for it and not the tax levy. You see that line is crossed for projected for next year, so the budget increase will be much less. The tax levy increase will be about the same. Some of the challenges we have for next year's budget, the biggest one is health insurance increases. Very disappointed last year when we got the rates for January of 2023, that there were double-digit increases. That was the second year in a row we've had double-digit increases. We had not had that in a number of years. 2024, we found out we have another year of double-digit increases. So this has put a great increase on our budget. It was actually increased 10% for actives and 22% for retirees. Another area was transportation. Transportation increases are based on the CPI when we're extending contracts. So that was based on 3.5% for last year. We're not sure what it's going to be for next year, but we expect probably a similar type number, 2% to 3%. Also, we've added additional routes for a number of different reasons, some special ed programs, some homeless students, some just going to new schools, new private schools we're required to provide the transportation for. Our employer contributions for the teacher's retirement system went up about $300,000 this year. There's only a half a percent increase in the contribution rate, but that, for us, equated to about $300,000. Our general insurance premiums, this is not the health insurance, this is liability, auto, student accident insurance. These are going up. They've been fairly steady over the last several years. This year, we're seeing a 20% increase in those rates. So that's going to be a big hit on that budget line. On the other side of the coin, we do get a little bit of relief. We had increased our utility rates last year, both the gas rates and the electric rates. We're actually reducing the electric rates and some of the gas rates for next year because those rates, while they were showing a large increase, kind of plateaued and have actually started to come down a little bit, the electric especially. So we've been able to reduce some of those budget lines. We've been worked to bring students back into the district from out-of-district programs, saving some out-of-district tuitions. Ms. Love has been, you know, very important in that role, bringing those students back into the district. We continue to do our contract negotiations. Our goal for all of our contract negotiations is to keep the overall contract increase under 2%. We've been doing that since the tax cap came into effect, and all of our unions, I have to say, have been great in working with us, and we've been able to do that for each of our different organ units. So just wanted to give a shout-out to all the different unions for, you know, working with us in these difficult times with the tax cap. And also, we were looking for an ability to create new programs utilizing existing staff. So we don't want to keep adding staff. We want to try to do more with the people and staff that we have. And as Mr. Gavin presented at our last meeting, we do have a number of different programs that we're going to be offering for next year, and we are not looking at an increase in staff for those. A little bit more on the revenue picture. As I mentioned, the tax cap, we'll be under the tax cap, so we'll not need to, a super-majority vote to pass the budget, just a simple majority. So it's a 2.49% increase for the taxes. State aid, I think I talked about this. I did want to note that if people are looking at the state aid projections in the media, it looks like we're getting a big increase. It's really not because what they've done is, part of it is the universal pre-K money. So last year, or this year, we projected to get about $1.1 million in universal pre-K money. We could not use that. We're only using about $500,000 of that. So what they did is reset the numbers for this year using the $500,000 number. They're still offering us the $1.1 for next year, so while it looks like $600,000 increase, it's really not an increase. It's the same money, we just can't use it. So we are still continuing to look at ways to increase our pre-K program and population so we can use more of that funding. Interest income. We went a number of years where interest income was not a significant portion of the budget. It had dropped. We used to have $1.5 million, $600,000 in fringe interest income. That number had dropped down to $100,000. We've bumped it up for this year, and we're going to put $900,000 in the budget for next year. So we're actually expecting more than that for this year, by the end of this year. So even with the rates coming down a little bit, we still think $900,000 is a good number to put in for next year. As I mentioned earlier, project rate program is strong. We're increasing that area by another $100,000. Pilot payments as well. Pilot payments are payments in lieu of taxes that some of the apartment programs, I guess most notably Avalon, pays us in lieu of paying taxes. They pay monies directly to the school district in lieu of taxes. So that's going to be increasing as more and more of that comes online, $100,000 more. to be increasing as more and more of that comes online. $100,000 more will be coming to the district. So that number should continue to go up every year by 50 to $100,000. And also, as I mentioned, we have declined in out-of-district tuition students in our special ed programs. Budget highs. So what we do every year when we build the budget is we rebuild the budget. We kind of zero, we zero-base our budgets every year. So every year, I go in, I look at all the staff we have, I look at where they are, and I budget in those areas based on what we're expecting for next year. I say that because many times, people look at different budget lines, salary lines in particular, and want to know why monies changed from one budget code to another budget code. There are many reasons for that. A lot of it's retirements. A lot of it is just general attrition. It's staff changes or moving between buildings. It's IEP recommendations. You know, one year, there's a one-to-one assigned, next year, there's not. The implementation of the ICT program. We didn't need as many teaching assistants. So things continuously move throughout the budget. So sometimes where something may not seem, you know, understandable in a particular budget line, there's a lot of reasons, especially with the salary lines, for that. All of our current programs that we have are rolling forward. We're not looking at any cuts in any programs. We have a number of new programs. Yeah, not breaking any news here. We're all discussed by Mr. Gavin at our previous meeting. Technology at the high school and the middle school, we have a number of different classes. We're increasing art at both the high school and the middle school. And we're also putting in personal finance at the high school and the middle school. All the different K-12 programmatic changes are listed. I put the link here in this presentation, so if people are looking on it online, they have an easy link, or just go back to the last budget meeting and Mr. Gavin's presentation is there. We also have another $100,000. This year, we added $100,000 into the budget for security initiatives. We really use that for covert security services. So we now have onsite security overseer, along with their group as a backup and support to go to. We have another $100,000 built into the budget for next year for additional security initiatives. So now to get into the specific budget areas. First part is the administrative budget. This budget, a little over $13 million. It makes up about 10% of our budget. This is the expenses for the Board of Education, the budget votes and election. It's the superintendent's office, the business office, all of our legal expenses, personnel, facilities, grounds, maintenance, security, data processing, and the administrative software, printing and mailing that we do, our general insurances, the liability and auto and so forth, and also BOSI's administrative costs. Changes, significant changes that we're seeing in this area for next year include changing over from IQM II to board docs for our board agenda information. We have the covert security services are now included as a separate line in the budget. Again, as I mentioned, the extra $100,000 for security initiatives. We are converting School Messenger to Parent Square for a new website and to increase communications throughout the district. We have reductions, as I mentioned, in both the electric and natural gas budget lines. And our general insurance costs are up about $100,000 due to those high premium increases. On our transportation budget, this budget, about $5.5 million is about 4% of the overall budget. This includes all the district transportation. We own and operate several minibus to provide some of our special ed transportation and assist with some of the small field trips in the district. Includes those, the bus maintenance and the inspections, as well as bus routing and software and bus passes. Includes contract transportation, which is all of our in-district transportation, as well as private and parochial school transportation. Includes all of the late buses, all the field trips, and all the athletic trips that we have to take. We have a public transportation line, which could be used for either the railroad or the nice Nassau County bus system. It's really, at this point, we haven't had anybody on buses lately, so it's really all for the lone railroad, naturally, just to get the kids passes that some go into the city for some of the schools. So we require to provide transportation up to 15 miles. A lot of these get them to, goes further than 15 miles, but it'll get them into that 15-mile zone. We also have BOSI's transportation that we pay for. That's transportation BOSI's does to some of their own schools. They provide that transportation. Significant changes in this area. We're up about $150,000 due to the CPI changes. Some of the private and special ed placements are up about $250,000, again, due to CPI, but also due to homeless placements and students going to some new schools that we haven't seen before. We've increased funding for field trip allocations. We've done some field trips this year. We pulled them out of our general field trip line. We have a general line every year for field trips. But these were, I think, very beneficial to Commerce Plaza, Benner's Farm, a couple others. So we have a separate line specifically for that for next year. We actually also had a reduction of $44,000 in the BOSI's transportation because we have fewer placements in the BOSI's programs for next year, or for this year, projecting fewer in next year as well. We have a couple of lines in our budget called youth program and community services. These sometimes are a little confusing. What this is, is really just for custodial overtime and used to open the buildings for all of our community groups who use the buildings on nights and weekends. So we have, you know, many of our buildings are open six days a week, some seven days a week with basketball in the winter. It goes towards other PTA activities that we might be having on a weekend on the school to bring the custodial staff in or other boy scout, girl scout activities. These budgets really are unchanged. We keep them pretty much the same from year to year, so there's really not much in those. It's also one part we do in community services, we do a census every year. That's covered in this particular budget line for the mailing supplies that go along with that. Then we have our benefits budget. This is one of the largest portions of the budget. It's 24%, almost a quarter of the entire budget. Covers the state teachers and employees' retirement system, all the social security and FICA taxes that we're required to pay on payroll, our workers' compensation, and unemployment insurance, our health insurance, and any other contractual benefits we have, like life, dental, and vision. Those are usually done through contracts as a lump-sum amount. We don't provide them separately. We provide them through the contracts, through an amount that we give to each bargaining unit to get the life, dental, and vision benefits that they want for their own units. Changes here include really no change in the ERS budget. The ERS contribution rate went up a little bit, but we're not increasing our budget line for that. We'll have enough money through reserves and our regular budget line to cover that expense. I mentioned before, TRS line, it looks like it went up about $300,000. We're projecting $200,000 within our budget to cover the rest through reserve use. We have a small reduction in unemployment insurance by about $15,000. That number has been a little lower for the last several years, so pulling a little bit money out of that. Health insurance is up $1.4 million. So that's our major increase. That's our biggest increase this year. As I said, it's due to a 10% increase in our active rates and 22% for retirees. And that's on top of a couple of years past of double-digit increases. The other contractual benefits are only up about $30,000, and that's due to contractual provisions. So I've talked enough about the insurance rates. This is just a chart of where they have been. So you can see, for the last few years, we've been up very high for the different rates. It had only gone over 10% really once in the last 10 years. And then in the last three years, it's been over 10% every year. So it has not been a big burden on the budget in prior years. We had some increases, not crazy, but last couple of years, this has been a big, big number on the budget. I also want to point out, there's three lines there. One is individual rates. That's green. The family rates are in orange. The purple rate is a Medicare rate. So that's really what we pay for retirees. A retiree who is over 65, Medicare becomes the primary insurance, and basically, the empire plan becomes a secondary insurance plan. So that rate is a little bit different. That rate had been low, had been actually being reduced for a few years in a row. They kept it down during COVID, but now it's really shot up for the last couple of years. So... Employer contribution rates. Blue line is the employees' retirement system. That has been pretty much the same. Had a little bit of a spike in the last couple of years, up and down, but it's kind of right back to where it's been. So that's why our budget line is the same. The teachers' retirement system, that was much higher. Thank goodness, we're down from those highs of almost 18%. It was about 10 years ago. But even with the small increase now, like I said, just a half a percent change, looks like a big increase on our budget. So we're hoping that number stays pretty much flat. We're hoping it actually drops a little bit. There were times, almost about 15, 15 to 20 years ago, where those rates were down in the 1% range. It really has to do with the markets and the stock market because they kind of group the rates based on the five-year average for the retirement system. And the funds that are invested by the retirement system really go as the stock market goes. So we've had a couple of good years, so we're hoping that will translate into a lower contribution rate over the next couple of years. And then in the capital portion of the budget, about $5.5 million, again, about 4% of the budget. We have tax anticipation notes. Each year, we have to borrow money to cover until we get our tax revenues in, which don't really start coming in until October. So in that September, October timeframe, we need money to cover all of our expenses and those first payrolls we have. So we issue tax anticipation notes to cover that little gap. We have lease purchase agreements, mostly on musical instruments that we have. We have other lease purchase agreements for our technology. We do that through BOSI's. These lease purchase agreements are in a debt service portion of our budget. We have debt service on the previous bonds. We have that floating from any previous bonds that we have. We have two or three that are ongoing. We have our engine performance contract, which still goes on for another few years. And then we have the major bonds that we had in 2012, '13 with the building addition here at the high school and some of the other buildings. And then we have our transfer to capital line, which is back down to $1.8 million to include in the budget for next year. The big changes in the capital budget is the tax anticipation note number will remain the same, even though interest rates have changed. We're expecting that number to remain the same. I believe the rates have peaked and are now coming back down. Instalment purchase line is up a little bit due to a new bus purchase. So if we do buy that new, but we always have money in the budget every year in this line for a new vehicle, usually for a bus. Sometimes we use it, sometimes we don't. If we do get a bus, it's up a little bit because if we do purchase a bus, we'd want to purchase an electric bus. We're going to be required to do that within the next 10 years or so. So if we're going to start replacing them, I think it's a good time to start doing that. So that's why that line is up a little bit. Our debt service is flat, so we're not projecting any more in debt service. The next big debt service drop will be in the '28, '29 school year. So it'll be relatively flat until then. And as I mentioned, the transfer capital is back down to $1.8 million. Now, I'm going to go through a number of projects that we have listed in the budget. The board and administration has gone through the buildings twice in the past year. We started doing that a couple of years ago, and I think it's great because it gives each board member a chance to see the buildings kind of a second time. So we all do it on a board tour in August. Every year, the entire board visits all of our buildings. But then in January, each board member takes a building, and we kind of go through each building with administration, with the principal, and kind of look at the different proposed projects that they want to do, as well as additional bigger projects, which we may not be able to fund within this regular budget. Something that we may need a bond for. As you have with your own house, we have ongoing maintenance and updates that we have to do, roof repairs, window repairs, HVAC systems. So at some point, we're going to have to do another bond. The rates going up as they have, this was really not the right time to do that. But as they come down, I think we'll be looking to have further discussions on possible timing for that. So for the capital projects in the budget. At Covert, we have classroom lighting upgrades for seven classrooms. We're also, they're also looking to add a bottle fill station. Let's replace the regular water fountain with those bottle fill stations. At Hewitt, we have a big project. We kind of put it off last year because we needed to run summer school there last year because of all the work that we were doing at the middle school. So we're going to repair and repave the parking lot and driveway at Hewitt this summer. We're going to repair and refinish four classroom floors, as well as the library floor. And we have some funding for additional slate roof, slate roof repairs. So we'll have that at Wilson as well. Every year, we have some issues with slate. Doesn't require full replacement of the roof, but we continue to look at different repairs that need to be made there. At Riverside, we have floor tile replacements in the hallway by the gym. We've done some work in that area with the ceilings and with the walls. So this should finish off the floors, make that area much nicer. We can replace the floor tile in the basement closets. Again, a lot of work there in the last year or so. This is just some final work we need to do down there in the basement. And we also have money for stair tread replacements. At Watson, we're looking to repair the overhang outside the front entrance. We're looking to replace three classroom doors to replace the gym curtains, and also the ceiling and lights in the main office. At Wilson, we're looking for ceiling and lighting upgrades in three classrooms, as well as the main office and the kitchen, slate roof repairs. We did some work in the media center last summer. We would like to continue that work with some additional shelving and furniture. We need to replace the condensate tank in that building for the heating system. And we're going to upgrade a handicap bathroom. At the middle school, where we had way too many projects to cover within this budget, this is what has made it in for this year. Flooring replacements in four classrooms, the phys ed office, repair in auxiliary gym and the principal's office. We are probably going to need to repair both the, completely replace the auxiliary gym floor and the main gym floor at some point. We don't have the money to do it now, so for now, we're going to be doing a repair there. We did quite a bit of roof work last year. We do have a small roof section above the stage that we need to replace, so we're going to do that. We want to add air conditioning for the basement student center. We want to repair a wall leak into the auditorium from the courtyard. So there is still, with all the work that we did, we still have an issue in one section of the wall, so we're going to repair that. section of the wall, so we're going to repair that. We want to finish the fencing all the way around Burtis to the tennis courts to make a nice even look all the way around the property. Cafeteria lighting upgrades, I have that in here. We're actually going to use cafeteria funding to pay for that. So it's in here because it's a project we're going to be doing, but we're not going to use general fund budget, general fund monies to do that. We're going to use the cafeteria fund. Fire alarm repairs for the middle school. We need to do actually a lot of cement work in the front of the building. This will cover a small portion of it. So we're going to make some repairs there. We fixed, now some of the leaks we did fix around the main office. We need to repair now some of the interior spaces, the main office supply closet and a window there, which had gotten water damage. So we can now make those repairs that the root cause has been, has been remedied. And then in the auxiliary gym, we're going to add some window controls so they can easier open and close those windows. At the high school, we're going to replace the gym entrance and closet doors. So all of the gym entry doors into the main gym from both sides will be replaced, as well as the entry doors into the back auxiliary gym are going to get replaced, as well as the doors to the closets in both the main gym and the auxiliary gym. We have bathroom repairs that we're going to make. Some of them have been longstanding requests, so we're going to get those taken care of. We have money in for guidance suite renovation. One of the things we're looking to do is to open up that area, make it much more enticing, get the kids in there and want to spend some time in there. They have requests to add four different bottle fill stations in the high school. Looking at classroom lighting upgrades in seven different rooms. Flooring repair in one room. I'm going to add a storage garage for additional outside equipment that we can't store inside the building. We also have a condensate return tank that we need to replace as part of the heating system in the high school. Also, as part of this capital budget is we have flexible furniture upgrades in all of our buildings. We actually started that process this year. We're looking to add quite a bit more in each of our buildings for next year to kind of expand upon those, that furniture for the students. And then I wanted to try to briefly go through some of the capital projects we did for this year. Did this over the summer and into this year. I'm going to try to go through it quickly. It's on, again, it's in the presentation for anybody that wants to come back and look. One project remaining that we still haven't finished is the masonry repair at the clock tower at Watson. That's something that we still have not been able to get done. That's still in the budget to, to take care of. But what we have done at Covert, new LED lighting in five classrooms in the gym, sending, refinishing three classroom floors. At Hewitt, we did floor replacements in three classrooms, as well as finished the drop ceilings in the hallways on the Hempstead Avenue side. And we also did some window shade replacements. At Riverside, we finished a renovation in the basement area. We added epoxy flooring in the bathrooms, painted two classrooms in the hallway outside the gym, and upgraded their exterior lighting. For Watson, we improved the playground lighting and had floor replacements in the grade four, five hallway and four of the classrooms in that hallway. New LED lighting in that wing as well. And we had to do an AC repair in one of the classrooms. At Wilson, we did new drop ceilings and LED lighting in six of the second floor classrooms. That's why this year's proposal for next year is to finish off those second floor classrooms. We did a renovation in the faculty bathroom, had to fix up one classroom floor. We removed some of the old AC units and repaired the walls in the principal's office and the main office, as well as installing a split AC unit in the nurse's office. And we had a renovation of the library space. At the middle school, we had the roof, the big projects, the roof replacements and the new turf field and track. We completed our elevator repair. We have replaced the auditorium ceiling under the balcony, added three bottle fill stations. We replaced locker room stalls in the girls' locker room, replaced floor and tile ceilings, floor tile and ceilings in the fourth floor classrooms. We replaced the kitchen walk-in freezer, and that was done with cafeteria funds. We had to replace drain pipes in room 115, as well as flooring repairs in two classrooms. Finally, at the high school, we completed the elevator replacement. We were able to repaint the track. We did a complete basement locker room renovation. We replaced three walk-in freezers for the kitchen, again, with cafeteria funding. Eliminated main stairwell skylight and a leak, which was perpetual and has finally stopped. We added sidewalks along the north parking field for a little bit more safety for our students as they walk out to their cars. Painted offices in the main office wing. Ceiling repairs in three classrooms. Flooring upgrades in four bathrooms. And we did some renovations and painting down for our greenhouse program. Just one last, in the administration building, we did epoxy on the bathroom floors. So that ends my presentation. Now I need water.
Yes. Take your water. Thank you, Mr. Bartels. I'll start before I turn over to the board for any questions. Just first of all, I just want to thank you, as always, for your thoughtful approach to not just preparing the budget, but explaining it to us and, and the community every year. I think it's important that we understand the process and starting at zero and then building up every year. I think that's an important point to make and understand. Going hand in hand with that, then, you can see more readily why there might be a significant change in a particular line or lines in the budget, as you're seeing what's going to best serve our students for the following year. So thank you for explaining that. As always, we very much appreciate not only maintaining and adding, not only maintaining but adding to our instructional choices, as well as our facilities and capital work. So thank you very much. I'll hold off on any further questions at this point. Any board members have questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll start with, I guess, general first, and then I'll go into capital, following your lead. In terms of, I noticed on the state aid slide, in terms of, I see that transportation line sort of stay, stay flat in terms of state aid for that transportation, but that is not considered an expense-driven aid, right? Even though we see our transportation expenses increasing?
It, it actually is an expense-driven aid, so we're expecting that number to go up. So that's another reason why I'm comfortable adding the money I am for our state aid picture for next year. The number that I believe they have in there for us, I expect to be higher based on our actual expenses for next year. Again, one of the pieces of that is our aid ratio, and that has stayed pretty much the same. So I'm expecting, because our, our expenses have increased, that our aid number shouldn't go up.
Good, good, as it should. Right. In, in other places, as you explained with the universal pre-K money, there is money, you know, sort of allocated and considered aid towards our district, but not money we can access.
Correct.
So those numbers can be deceiving.
Yes.
I think we're hearing, you know, the difficult straits that other districts are in across Nassau County, having to, to cut staff and, you know, increase class size. And we are not looking to any of those sort of cuts. I heard you say we are maintaining the current programs, adding, and in terms of a less than 1% increase to the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Taking out any kind of the, the capital projects that you mentioned, nothing to the scale of the capital projects from last year's budget.
Correct.
I'm wondering about some of the capital projects in terms of renovating the guidance suite here at the high school and the Hewitt parking lot. Are either of those projects that you anticipate needing the architects to be involved?
Yes, we, we do have the architects involved for both of those projects.
Okay.
As, as well as the small section of the roof above the stage at the middle school. So the, the architects are working on those three projects.
Okay, good. And the elevators, I know those were big projects that we did last year. Are those working out?
They-
Do we feel confident with those repairs and-
They have been working out terrific.
Good, those were a long time coming.
They were a long time coming. They were, both of them, at both the middle school and the high school, major repairs. The high school included a complete replacement of the entire cab. So where it was a lot of controls and a lot of work. At the middle school, the high school was by far a much larger job, but both of them required the elevator to be out of use for almost two months. So, you know, kudos to our custodial staff and our students helping out. The summer workers, they've been dragging a lot of things up and down the stairs over the last, over the summer, last summer, so.
Any renovation, any, any materials had to be hand carried up and down the stairs?
Up and down the stairs, yeah.
So on that note of the high school, I guess my, my last question before I'll let others chime in. In terms of the new classes, and I heard Mr. Gavin talk about the new choices available across the different buildings, and having no impact on staffing or payroll is great to hear, but I'm also wondering, in terms of new equipment, or will there be capital needs? You know, is there a computer science class that's going to need new computers or personal finance? Do you anticipate any major increases with the new classes?
In each of the new classes that we're proposing, we don't need a new lab to do for finance, or we don't right now need a new lab for computer science. If we continue to expand different opportunities, we might want to consider something like that in the future. But for right now, our equipment, we just redid the Tamberg lab last year at the high school, so we, we just basically redid the whole, the whole layout. And with APCSP this year at the high school, there, all the equipment, we're meeting the needs of all the equipment there, so I think we're in good shape.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also like to say thank you for the presentation and for all the work that goes into it, you and everybody else that also has to get you their numbers. So my first question, just to clap, make sure I'm understanding, the hold harmless provision we've been talking about, that would only, that doesn't impact expense-driven aid from the state, right? It's only, I shouldn't say only, still significant if, if that goes away, but it's not going to impact those expense-driven numbers, correct?
Correct. It's, it's only been talked about as in terms of foundation aid at this point.
Okay.
That's what, there's no safe harmless on a foundation aid.
Okay. My other question, just regarding the health insurance increases. So obviously, now it's been multiple years of double digits, which typically was not the case. Like, is that just what we're expecting now going forward? Do you have any way of knowing that year to year, or you kind of get blindsided like the rest of us?
It's, it's the same thing. We, we get blindsided. There's really no way to know where those rates are going to go from one year to the next, as you saw from that one chart. It's, they've been kind of all over the place, and it's hard to predict where I, you know, I would think part of their monies are, you know, based on who's buying what products and who's using what services in terms of the healthcare. And I don't see it, you know, receding, so I would expect those numbers to continue. As far as the increases, I would certainly hope we're not going to be, continue to be double-digit increases, but I can see them staying the same or, you know, continuing to increase a little bit from year to year.
Okay.
Again, one of the things that we've done to that point is, in negotiations with the different bargaining units, is trying to claw back a little bit more and have employees pick up a little larger portion. Do it very little at a time, so there's no major impact on any of our employees, but it is something we look to in negotiations, as some, if there's any way we can defer or offset some of that cost.
Thank you. It's hard all around, right? Like, it's hard for us, it's hard for the teachers, it's hard for the taxpayer. It's like, everyone kind of has to give a little, give a little, I guess, to make it all work out. My, sorry, I'm just looking through my notes. So I, I did want to say that I appreciate that we're, we have the additional security funding in there this year. I know we'll be probably talking about what that means, but I think it's good that it's there and it gives us some flexibility regarding that. My next question was just for, so I toured the middle school, right? It's definitely, I mean, it's a classic, but it's, it's definitely in need of a little TLC. So, so I, I know, I just know people always ask about the lockers and the, you know, some of the things that, when you walk around, like, aren't, aren't shiny and new, like in some of the other buildings that we have. So I, I don't really know, I don't think I have a question. I just, it's, it's like a work in progress, but I'm hopeful that at least the, the roof will alleviate some of the, some of the things that have been problematic there. But I do think, like, every, every kid in our district goes through that building, and at some point, I just, I do think we need to look at ways to upgrade some of those. I don't, I'm not, I don't think I'm saying you don't, you don't agree with, but it's-
They are, they're, they're, all these things are on our radar, and it's just a matter of, you know, what money we have available each year.
Right.
So as you see, there are a number of projects we have in there. That's one of them, but that's one large project. So if we're going to do lockers, you know, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars to replace all those lockers. So it's a big, big chunk.
And then if we do lockers, should we repaint the whole thing, which are more hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Yeah.
Then we should look at the ceiling grids, which are more hundreds of thousands of dollars, and then we should look at the floors, which are more hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I think it's all of us trying to figure out piece by piece how we do it. I mean, it's, we have three buildings, to be honest, that are 100 or close to 100 years old, you know?
Right.
We, just because of that, there are going to be needed repairs at times, and the middle school is the one right now that is, you know, we, we did a lot this year with that roof. So a lot of the major leaks that we've had have been remedied with the roof. We still have window issues or wall issues or something that might be coming through a brick or, or something like that from time to time. So we're working on all of that piece at the same time. So the most important thing was really tying up the main section of the roof last year, which reduced probably 85% of the leaks that we see on a day-to-day basis at the middle school. And now it's really about, okay, now we know that the roof is tight, where else can we see that needs to be repaired? But certainly, Mr. Bartels and I have talked a lot about what we need to do in terms of capital work for the future, so.
And I, I will just say, like, adding the AC in the basement, I think, is actually a great addition, because I think it'll make that space, like, a more viable option for a variety of things. My only other comment slash question, so the flexible seating has been, people have been telling me at least, that it's like a, a really great addition. I'm just curious, as we're investing in more, have we gotten any feedback on, like, what we have and whether we need, not that we shouldn't buy it, but like, is, is what we have serving what we need, or should we be looking at?
So I'll give you an example. We bought some flexible seating at the greenhouse-
Okay.
-which they picked, and then they found that it doesn't really truly meet their needs.
Right.
So we're probably going to move some of that furniture out and get them something new that really fits their needs. So we are being, you know, trying to be reflective on the pieces that, the pieces that we buy, and then does it work or does it not work? So in terms of, like, the elementary and the Tamberg lab that I talked about before, those have been more positively received, and we're trying to make sure that form meets function.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. You earned more than the bottle of water tonight. We appreciate it. It's 45 minutes of, like, just straight talking. That was unbelievable. I know, really, it's a lot. It's a lot of information.
You don't usually get that from me.
It's a lot of information.
No doubt.
So I have a question about, so we have a lot of things that are kind of fixed right now, things that we expect and, you know, that you already have budgeted for, but some of those fluid things, like retirements, enrollment, sections of, of classes, that could change from now until, you know, budget vote or whatever, until we finalize the budget. I, I guess my question is, which way are we trending? Are we trending in our favor in those areas in terms of, you know, attrition and enrollment? And also, if we are, do we have that money kind of marked, or are we looking to do something with that?
Yeah, I, I do have a couple of contingent positions in the budget, which looks like we will be using at the elementary level. We have, many of our kindergarten projections are in at this point. The enrollments have been confirmed. So it looks like we'll be adding another section at Riverside, as well as another section at Hewitt. So both of those are, Riverside is clearly into two. I think they have a little over 30 students already, so, which is very high for Riverside, which is a good sign. And Hewitt is up in the upper 70s already, so they'll be at four sections.
Okay.
So those definitely. So, those definitely, Hugh, Covet, Wilson and...
Watson.
And Watson are steady in both two and three sections where they have been, and it doesn't look like they're going to get into the third section or the fourth section at, at Wilson.
Okay.
So, unless there's some drastic change, but, but they're in, they're, you know, lower into those second classes and third classes.
So, we have that built in, or are they contingents?
Yes.
Contingency in case we need it, if Watsons should soar or something like that, we're all set there?
Correct.
Okay. In the line-by-line, which I know we didn't go through here, but just two, like, high-level questions about the line-by-line budget. One was about BOSIs. So, I'm looking at that kind of line, and it looks pretty steady, but in a lot of the lines, it looks like what we spent this past year and what we're budgeting for next year, there's a big discrepancy, like, we're budgeting a lot more money for twenty-four, twenty-five. Is there a reason within BOSIs that we're doing that?
So, a lot of that is, we've had money budgeted in some areas, and then we spend it, we try to spend it through BOSIs if we can, because we can get aid back on that. So, where they may have been budgeted in a regular, not under a budget code, BOSIs code in a prior year, this year we're looking to add it into budget, into the BOSIs budget code.
Okay.
So, that's why you may see an increase there.
Increases. Okay, so even though that line is steady, it's more about the way that we're spending it and then looking to receive some of that money back?
Yes.
Okay. The other question I had in the line-by-line was the increase in certain teacher assistant categories. I know we've been talking about kind of our movement into the ICT model, how we're using less teaching assistants in different buildings, but it looks like we have increases in sections for teaching assistants. It's like a higher level, maybe not building by building question, but just want to know if we're still in the philosophy of working with the mo, the new model and not on individual basis, or if it's special ed-driven that we need more people for one-to-one aides or things like that, if we had an idea of why we have increases there.
I think it's a combination, so overall head count in terms of teacher assistance and teacher aides, we are definitely down over the last two years. So, you might see some move in movement from, from building to building, there might be a teacher who's, a teacher assistant or teacher aide's salary is more, and that get moved to that building, so that might, that might account for a difference too. So, for example, if somebody was only working for a year, we might have moved somebody over who has been here for fifteen.
Okay.
And their salary might be, you know, an increase there, where we might see different things in terms of lines. But in terms of overall head count for both the teacher aide and the teacher assistant line, we're down.
All right, that makes sense, thank you. And then lastly, capital-wise, we talked about all the, you know, Rockville Center School District buildings, but the other places that we service, St. Agnes, greenhouse, the garage, trucks, administration, are we doing any capital projects within any of those areas?
We definitely need a new truck.
That's what I was thinking.
We definitely need a new truck.
Just wondering, and we're also looking at our whole fleet, hopefully, and just determining if we need to actively buy new cars.
Let's start with the ones.
Okay.
The one truck we're getting this year with, we're actually going out for the purchase now, we just got back the insurance check for that, so we already got the money back for that. It's not for the full value, so we are going to pull some money from another part of the budget, actually from the installment purchase for the bus we didn't buy this year, and put it towards that vehicle, so, so we're going to buy that this year.
Okay.
So, and as far as the other buildings, we did some work at the greenhouse last year, we didn't have any plans to spend any, any large money next year. Same thing with the maintenance garage, we had no plans for any expenses there, and the space at Wilson, the portables and the synagogue, we have no, you know, they're, the portables are their, are their own issue.
Right.
But we really don't want to pour a lot of money into that at this point, and the synagogue is in actually good shape.
What about the St. Agnes? We had toured it together, just some small things, those things we're just able to be taking care of.
Yeah, the St. Agnes thing, we're going to just take care of through our regular budget.
Okay.
We don't really need a capital line for that, so we're doing that through our regular maintenance.
Thank you, but we're still addressing the things that we've done.
We are addressing those pieces, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. I really can't imagine how difficult it is to consistently manage a multimillion-dollar budget with a few certainties every single year, so thank you for ensuring our district's financial health so that we can continue to provide our students with an excellent education. I think the budget looks great. I really like the addition of Parent Square. I think that's going to be a nice, nice tool to help keep our parents in contact with the district. The one question that I had, kind of piggybacks off what Ms. Hackett was asking with regards to personnel, but more focused at the middle school and the high school, just like to the extent that we are really looking at the sections of classes that we're offering, that we're looking at how they're staffed, and that we're looking at enrollment. You know, in the elementary schools, I feel like we're pretty, we're continually at, you know, like, a, a peak number that we reach.
At an appropriate level.
Yeah. And I think in some cases, those class sizes, at least for the little ones, are, they're big, but that's what we have space for, so that's where we're working strained. I think there's a big difference at the middle school and high school, where we have sections that have four kids with two teachers. Those are the things that I want to look at, because that feels wasteful to me. I understand in a support class, we're not going to put twenty kids in a support class, but if we have multiple sections of the same support class running, I'd like to see at least eight or ten kids in those classes. If it's just one class and that's it, and we have a low enrollment, that's fine, but when there's those multiple sections, all lowly enrolled with multiple teaching staff in it, that to me feels like we really need to look at that. So, that is something that I would ask moving into the next year, that we're really taking a careful look at, because there's definitely money to be saved there.
Do we know?
And that's pretty much my only comment slash question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you again. My other comments and questions have been addressed by the board, so thank you, Mr. Bartels.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Turning to the public work session portion, we have policies and superintendent's regulations. At stage one this evening, we have sixty-one thirty evaluation personnel. Any comments or questions on sixty-one thirty?
Seems to be bringing it in line with current statute, removing the APPR detail.
Correct.
And that was added probably ten years ago.
Twenty-twelve or twenty-thirteen.
On, I guess it's page two, under disclosure of APPR slash educator evaluation ratings, the second part that is stricken, starting with however the release of such aggregate data may not include personally identifiable, identifiable information, is that, that no longer applies? I see it's, it's, it's just aggregate data here. The commissioner is required to disclose, review and make such data widely available to the public. I just wanted to make sure that the rest of that personally identifiable information was no longer applicable.
I can double-check that for you, that's a good point.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Do you want to hold this then, until we check, because I think that's pretty significant?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll hold this at stage one, Mrs. Celberti?
Yep.
Seventy-one twenty, age of entrance. Comments or questions? This is all?
I just had one question.
Yeah.
The subsection A at the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
Submitted and accepted by an appropriate school district authority, is that something we need to, or want to, like, identify the person?
Specify.
Who we're, is giving that approval?
I think you usually designate somebody at your reorganization meeting to fulfill this function. I don't know whether it's your residency officer or enrollment officer.
Registrar.
Register.
Registrar, thank you.
So, are we okay with adding a title?
Do you want to, want to be more specific?
Yes.
I can make sure that language is added.
All right, so we had registrar to A.
Or superintendent's designee or something like that, just in case.
That's probably the best way to do it. Superintendent's designee is the best way to do it.
Superintendent's designee.
Got it?
Thank you.
I just have a question, it's not about the policy, but from, with the part where it talks about from other schools, section B, where it says by October fifteenth, we'll make a determination if the child is appropriately placed, do we inform parents when they transfer their child in their first grade that we're going to be evaluating them to make sure that placement is appropriate, and then do we have a process, like, in place? Because that's only like a month of school, like, I would just be curious to know what that process is.
I think the process goes with...
I had the same question.
Our typical data that we would do normally as part of, like, running records or part of our math or NWEA, so all of the things that we do right away, pretty much in the beginning of the year, would fall most likely by October fifteenth in most cases, so I would say that I'm pretty comfortable with the fact that we have a good understanding where the kids are, particularly new entries, because that would be one of the first people we recommend that would happen.
And then parents, the parents are also duly informed?
Yeah.
That we're making a determination about their child, and they could possibly be demoted to kindergarten?
Well, I think that usually happens at the intake, so when somebody comes in, the first time we get to meet the child, we talk about any issues that we may have, and that's an ongoing conversation through the building principal, it could be through the social worker or the psychologist, depending on if we think there's a need. So, in most cases, this is not an issue in terms of demotion, because we have covered it, because we've done a solid intake. So, I think that's really where we do the lion's share. Now, can we get bad information at an intake from some, somehow, or have a student have, for example, records from maybe another country that may not be complete, where we have to make a determination? That's something that we would do, but we try to make that before we make the placement. So, we don't want to really, like, I don't want anyone to walk away, be like, my kid was in first grade and they yanked him out by October fifteen. So, that's not the case, that really is incumbent upon our social workers, our psychologists and our building principals to do a solid intake, so we make the best placement possible.
Right, because it's not an automatic intake, I mean, it's not automatic placement, dependent on birthday.
Right, so...
There's a lot of other factors.
We could, in theory, so, a student comes that has interrupted education, for example, right? Went to kindergarten for a month and a half in a, in another country, did not necessarily, we get that information, we have a conversation with the parent, we have a conversation with the professionals involved, and we say, it might be advantageous if that student never completed kindergarten or didn't complete the lion's share of kindergarten, that we might want to say, okay, this might be something that we would do again, kindergarten would do again. So, a lot goes into that. The age of the student might go into that, so it might be a seven-year-old who's never completed kindergarten before, so we have to have a conversation about that. So, there's a lot of different information that we would take into account.
Okay.
Okay. Are we okay to move this with that change in letter E?
Yes.
And then we'll follow up with the information from letter B. Seventy-five thirty, child abuse and maltreatment?
I have one proposed addition, if you don't mind.
To seventy-five thirty?
Yes. Under E, where it says using corporal punishment as defined with the Commission of Education, I suggest we add the word using impermissible corporal punishment, because in the commission's regulations, corporal punishment is generally prohibited, except with three exceptions, self-defense to protect the student from hurting themselves or hurting another person.
So, that's already redlined, Jean, that's on page three?
Yeah.
We're just adding impermissible.
Okay.
I just want to add the word so, so it sort of correlates with what comes later on.
Right, because we just had looked at that policy.
With the other policy we tried?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll add that word.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Should we cross-reference that policy somewhere?
It's the next policy.
It's the next one, now we have to move to stage, well, we would be moving to stage three.
No, but I think we, I think what Dr. Downing is suggesting, should we cite that policy in this, is that right?
Well, it's, I guess it said it's seventy-five thirty.
Got it.
And then seventy-three fifty.
Seventy-five thirty is child abuse and maltreatment.
Yeah, so, to your point.
I think we should cross-reference both of them.
Yes.
Can we add that too as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a couple of other questions too, mostly just, like, formatting. So, in, in a lot of our other policies, like, we boldface the headings of each section, so could we just change that?
Sure.
Letter E on the first page, so, I think it's, I think it's saying that you're, if you, if you're a mandatory reporter, you're immune from liability, right? And then there's a penalty for failure to report?
Well, you're immune from liability under law if the report is done in good faith, not in the worst, you're not totally immune if you're doing it in a vindictive, bad-faith manner.
So, that letter E, I find a little confusing, because I, I feel like we should separate out immunity from liability and then penalty into two separate things, because the way that I'm reading it, it could, I think it could be interpreted to say immunity from liability and penalty from...
I see what you're saying, so instead of, instead of like...
Immunity from penalties.
Could be separated.
Right.
So, have an E and then, like, an F and then put everything else down.
Yes.
Okay.
All of these refer back to the regulations, what that will be developed, maintained in the center?
Right. Okay. Then, on a couple of, in a couple of the paragraphs, we have a he, she, they, that's like, so it, so on the second page, on the, under prohibit, prohibition of retaliatory personnel action, the second line in that paragraph, employee believes that he or she has, they have, like, it just needs to be, it's a couple of typos, I think.
It's typos, yep.
Yeah, that's a typo.
And then there's the same on the last page, a couple of instances where that happens. Then, at one point on, on page three, under the section that read, that's labeled duties upon receipt of an allegation of child abuse.
Where are we on, page three?
Subsection A, we have the name of the child's parent, like, this whole, this whole paragraph reads, and the name of the child's parent, and then on the next side, we have the child, we have the same paragraph, but we say the child's parent or guardian, so I think we should just have consistent, yep. And then my last question, the very last paragraph, it specified prohibition on aiding and abetting sexual abuse, and it says, no district employee can help someone obtain a job if they've been, if they believe they've been engaged in sexual misconduct, but my question is, does it just have to be sexual, or should that be broadened to include? Because the whole policy is about child abuse in general, not limited to sexual child abuse, so...
Correct.
I'm wondering if we should just broaden that, or if that's coming from the state law and that's just the way it's supposed to read?
I think we can broaden it, but I'll double-check that.
We'll confirm if it's state law.
Okay.
I think that is.
That's, that's it for me.
So, I think we hold this one as well?
Yeah.
Okay, stage two, we have seventy-three fifty, kind of physical restraint, corporal punishment.
I have one thing here too, that I missed last time. I think on page seven, I think it's just a typo, the emerg, there's a section labeled emergency interventions. I think it's repeated from the previous page. Those, those two, number one and number two, are also listed on page six.
On page six?
Yeah, page six, it says emergency interventions, number one, physical restraint, number two, physical restraint, and then that's, those same two sentences are on page seven as well.
Okay.
Delete one or the other?
Yeah, I think there, it's just...
Yeah, I think it's on page six that has to go.
So, do you want to leave this at stage two then, we'll make that change, or do you want that to go forward with that revision?
I'm okay with it going forward with that revision, because everyone else is, yes?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in fever?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in fever?
Aye.
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 Can I have a motion to approve the receipt of financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve Board actions one through five?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to return to executive session to discuss the employee history of a particular person?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next meeting is on March 7. That is a regular meeting. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.